Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Sciop Township Action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
The Sciop Township Planning Commission meeting for Markalask 2024. We'll call, please, Secretary.
We'll call the Commissioners of the Sciop Township Planning Commission. Abel.
President.
Moore.
President.
Culberson.
President.
Rothney.
President.
Welsh, present. Hyde.
Present.
Reiser.
Present.
All right. With that, we'll go to communications and correspondence. We did receive four pieces of correspondence. One was uploaded under the Trailwoods. Dexter, Lima Township and Ann Arbor, that's the city of Dexter, have all given us notice that they're updating their master plans or in Ann Arbor's case, their comprehensive plan. And so it usually takes a while and then at, once they have a draft plan, we also get a notification. So that's just a heads up that they're starting that process. And all right, anyone else have any other correspondence? There was Rob Patterson's email that was uploaded with the Trailwoods. Any other correspondence? Aren't? Yes. Oh, we don't have that. All right, we just need to adapt the agenda as, and I know, yes, Commissioner.
I would recommend, I'd make a motion to move the Trailwood PUD ahead of the unfinished business because that's something
All righty. Is there support for?
For?
Okay, so moved by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Reiser, that we move on the Trailwoods ahead of our unfinished business discussion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we will be doing that. There are no presentations, so I'm opening public comment at 7:02. We don't have any public present in the township hall, so we'll move to those attending online.
And Rob has his hands raised. And Rob, you should be able to go, right?
Yep. Since Sciop Township President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, Kristi Aiken, for running Zoom. Bless you for being here late on a Monday night.
Thank you.
Chair Culberson, thank you for putting my email into the agenda packet. I will say that when it was put into the agenda packet, the two images were zoomed in on. So it cut off the text that I put in, and the text was center line of current road with an arrow. And you just didn't see the center line part of that sentence. But that was to highlight where the straight road would be compared to where it was on the maps. Trustee Reiser, thank you very, very much for your email. I just read that a little bit ago. I look forward to your questions about the two different options for the culvert. And I would like to add to that, and you mentioned this in your email. If Eagle has been the deciding factor in why moving the road is the only option. In the agenda packet, there are documents from Carlisle Warpman, OHM, the Road Commission, and one other, I think. But there's nothing from Eagle. So if Eagle is the one demanding that the road be moved, I think the Planning Commission needs to see that document. And Lima Township, Dexter, and Ann Arbor are all adjusting their master plans at the same time. I'm wondering, is that because, maybe Laura could answer this question. Are they, do they all have the same sort of services of someone like Carlisle Warpman? Who is advising municipalities to, on their master plans and therefore they're on the same schedule? And is there any advantage for Sciop Township being on the same schedule of the master plan changes as our three neighbors are? And that is everything. Thank you very much. Oh, and Laura, thank you very much for the solar plan that you came up so quickly with. It's in the, the agenda packet for tonight. That was very fast. So thank you very much for getting that done so quickly. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak in public comment? Please raise your hand.
No hands are raised.
All right. Seeing that no hands are raised, I'll close public comment. Second, second, moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Kipple, to close the public comment. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Close at 7:06. Right? We have no public hearings, so we're moving on to new business, Trailwood PUD, minor major amendment determination. And I think just because we have a very new, new member for the Planning Commission, and I don't think we have any members that were there in 2015 when the PUD was approved.
Say, were you there? Laura was there?
Yeah, and OHM. Yeah, that's, that's the continuity, I think. So it would be good to get a little bit of history and so. Yeah, so why don't you, you all kind of start and then we'll move to Carlisle Warpman and OHM.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again, and nice to see fresh faces as well. Just to give you a little background, the PUD, when it was originally proposed for the township, went through the normal process of, you know, you go through now. And as part of the approval process, we had to get the Road Commission's approval for the project. We did a traffic study, et cetera. And there were a list of improvements which were enumerated in the development agreement or in, in the road improvement agreement with the Road Commission.
Could you just tell us who you are?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm David Stolman with Billmore. Sorry about that. I've been here so many. I apologize. I'm wondering from what view. The blue hair in.
Yes.
So as part of the final PUD and the approvals, which were unanimous across the board for the Trailwoods project, the Road Commission made several demands on road improvements along Jackson Road, which is a right turn lane, improvements along Stabler and along Park. Those road improvements included amongst other things, the paving of the intersection of Park and Stabler and the reconfiguration of the drain alongside it. That road improvement agreement was executed and became part of an exhibit to the development agreement as part of the final PUD. At the time, we had not designed or tried, or permitted, because it was premature, to permit the road improvements at the intersection. And as we went through the process, and Scott can tell you more about the technicalities than I can, because I'm not a civil engineer, the permitting process took close to three years.
Thirty, thirty-two months.
Because really, at least my, my understanding is that there, at the time, there were not any regulations for stream relocations that were applicable, and so they were sort of figuring it out as they went. The end result was we got a permit for construction from Eagle, and the Road Commission was satisfied with the design of the road. So those are the two main permitting agencies that, you know, we're dealing with, as well as actually the Washington County Water Resource Commission. And we were getting prepared to construct and pave, install the improvements last summer, when we ran into an issue where home buyers and residents in the community were not aware of the relocation. And we did not sell them the homes. We didn't have any direct contact with the home, you know, who sold them. So we don't know what was told them or not. As a result of that, when we found out that there were complaints and issues with the homeowners, we held a meeting last, late summer, I believe, open to everyone in the township. And we were in this hall and got everyone's comments as far as issues related to the construction. And then we asked Scott to work with the Road Commission and with Eagle to see if we could find a option that improved on the situation better than the one that was permanent. And from there, I guess I will let Scott take over in terms of the details there. I will say, just sort of beat Scott to the punch, that at that meeting that we had with the residents, we told them that we would be transparent about this and that we would welcome a public hearing. So this doesn't seem like it's, there's some improvements going on that, you know, they aren't aware of. So we're in support of Laura's position that that there, this should be a major amendment. We should have a public hearing. So we're in support of that. As to the technicalities of the actual improvements, I'll turn it over to Scott. Let Scott take it from there.
Yeah, the stakeholders involved in this, in this, this project included the Road Commission, the Water Resources Commissioner's Office, and Michigan Eagle. All three of these agencies have differing points of view, what they consider to be important and what their long-term goals are or for a project like this. So that's why it took so long to get this permitted, because we, we develop an option and we take it to, to the three of them, and, and one would say, yeah, that's great, and two would say, no, no way. And then we do another option and, and look at another scenario of how we can accomplish this. And two would say, yes, and one would say, no, not over my dead body. And it became obvious that who, who really controlled this ultimately is Eagle. They're the ones that are going to issue the permit for the new culvert and the, and the drain relocation. The Road Commission was trying to protect their interests in that they, they stipulated in the road improvement agreement that the two structures on Park and Stabler would be replaced with one singular structure. Their interests are one structure, low maintenance, and let's make, make this easier for the long term for us. The Water Resources Commissioner, they wanted a streamlined drain. They didn't want any, any superfluous details that they are going to get stuck maintaining over the years. Eagle, on the other hand, wanted all sorts of riffles and rapids and vegetation and everything. So these, these three bodies did not see eye to eye on this at all. So when we eventually found a solution that worked and that involved relocating the road so that we could minimize the amount of stream relocation, everybody was happy with that. Surprisingly, the Road Commission was like, sure, you can move our road. We don't care. And, and Eagle was like, well, that's, that's the minimum amount of stream relocation that I see that you guys have provided in any of your options. And so we're, we're in for that. And the Drain Commission was like, well, as long as you don't put a bunch of stuff in there that's going to tangle our county drain or we're going to have to maintain, we're good with that as well. And so that's how we got to the solution that we, that we finally got permitted by all three agencies. When we did this, the, the, the primary concerns of Eagle was the amount of enclosure of the existing stream that we were going to cause. That's, that's the amount of box culvert we're going to put in. They don't want a darkened stream corridor and the amount of stream bed relocation that we were going to do. And so they wanted that to be the minimum of, of any of the options possible. There was actually one option initially that had less enclosure, but that required guardrails to be on the ends of the culvert at the sides of the road. And the Road Commission said, no, we don't want to maintain those guardrails. Everybody hits those things. They're nightmare for us to maintain. So we had, we went to the longer culvert that Eagle begrudgingly approved because the Road Commission had kind of put the kibosh on the shorter one with the, with the, with the guardrails on it. So this was a long negotiating process. As David indicated, we don't know what the homeowners knew. We, there's four degrees of separation between us and, and the homeowners, between the real estate agents and the two builders out there. But when they discovered that the road was going to be shifted over about forty feet or so from where its current location, you know, it was getting closer to their backyards. It wasn't in their backyards. It was in, in open space and everything. But we appreciate their concerns and, and so we set about looking at a way to minimize, you know, to make it better somehow or another. And so we had, I mean, we had two meetings with township officials. We had a meeting with Eagle and the Road Commission. And we arrived at a solution where we're, we can take the permitted location of the road relocation and we can shift it back further to the west by twenty feet and still be in the existing drain easement and/or road right-of-way without requiring any off-site private easements to be negotiated, which are basically deal killer. And so that was what we arrived at as a solution to better the situation. That, and we're putting a large berm in the open space behind the, the most affected residents and heavily landscaping that to protect them from, from any road noise or light pollution, whatever. I mean, the, the result is that we're basically relocating the road about thirty-five feet closer to the, the residence than it is now.
Yes. So what is staked out there right now? Is it this proposal or is it a different one? You said you just negotiated a change. So is it staked as?
We, we state the edge of the proposed, not the permitted, the proposed compromise solution, so that the residents there could see where that was at.
Yeah. New solution.
Correct. Yeah, that's correct.
And just.
I'm going to my turn.
Just to clarify a couple of things.
Yeah.
One, are those stakes, the edge of construction like was, which was somewhat of a contentious point last year? Are those the actual road location?
It's the, it's the edge of the asphalt pavement.
Okay.
It's out there right now.
Beyond that.
Right.
As, as proposed or as previously permitted?
No, as proposed. It's the compromise solution.
Has the proposed been permitted?
No. No.
Okay.
We've had, we've had meetings with Eagle about it and, and, and expressed to them what we were going to do. And we, I basically get, did the summary for them, explained to them, you know, what, what happened and why we're back in front of them after, after nearly three-year, you know, struggle to get a permit from them. And, and so they understand the situation and they listened to the alternatives that we presented to them. And they didn't say they would approve this, but they said this is the most likely alternative to be approved.
So you said thirty-two months for the phase one permits?
Yes.
So is this another thirty-two months?
I hope not. No, we think it's, there is so little change in it. A lot of this resulted, a lot of this delay with the first one resulted in the fact that the, that Eagle adopted a new philosophy. And it was called, it was a study of stream functional loss, the function that a stream provides to the environment. And so we had to, we hired an environmental consultant, ECT. Many of you aren't familiar with them. They studied the, the functions that this, this water course provides to the environment and then proposed solutions, how they would replicate those functions lost in the stream relocation and, and what we were going to do to apply those, you know, some concepts to make this basically, you know, a, a, even remediation. So that took a long time because they admitted that they had just adopted this and they had no standards for review and approval.
So on your plan, on your plan on page five is the details really of, of, I want to say where the rubber hits the road, where the culvert hits the road. Right? Or maybe it's not five, but. Maybe it's page eight is the best description of it, right? Five does too. Pages five and eight really show where the culvert's going to go. And it looks to me it's a hundred and eight linear feet of seven by twelve box culvert. It's seven foot by twelve foot. So does that mean it's a seven-foot-high culvert by a twelve-foot-wide culvert?
Correct.
That's a hell of a culvert. That's pretty big.
That's what is required.
But that, and that's, do you decide that or does Eagle decide that?
Through.
The Road Commission or does the Summitza or?
Through.
Ashco?
Through engineering hydraulic studies and modeling the, the water course. You can't raise, you can't put in a culvert that's so small that it creates a back, creates a backup behind it. Okay, so this is the size that allows the, the one-hundred-year flow to pass through without creating. So without causing a, a rise in flood elevation behind it.
Okay. Now, I, just for our record, there's another gentleman who's drawing at the table. Is he with you or is he a, is he a member in public?
I've never met this man in my life, but.
For information, we, we will have another public comment period after, after our business. We've already conducted.
Can I give you my presentation? I have, I have eight copies here for everybody.
Who are you?
For you to look at. Plus, I talked with, oh gosh, who was it today? Ah, yes, today earlier, because I live on that corner there for the last fifty years. What is your name, sir? I have the farm, the Labattir Farm. Okay. And I'm also a mechanical engineer.
I'm in here and. Is that the property of townships now?
What?
What, what corner? What corner?
The, the south, or the northwest corner.
Okay, that's township property now, right?
The twenty-three acres is, but I'm, I'm next, I'm right next, I have sixteen acres right next to it.
West or north?
Then there's, no, further west.
Okay.
And then you go another, on the other side of me is another eighty acres of township land in two forties, sort of.
Okay, so what, what we can do, sir, is why don't you wait for just a moment? We'd like to finish the presentation by the applicant and our, and the.
Evening, sir, you first?
And, and, yeah, well, you just leave them on the table and we'll give you an opportunity to speak to this, okay? After they're done, all right? It'll, it'll be a few minutes.
I'll let you step on a flash drive for the screen here.
All right, all right. Thank you. Yeah, we're, we just need to kind of go.
But I'll wait. I see your hand.
Yep.
Yes, I only asked one of my questions.
I only have one more, and that was you mentioned that the stream relocation was dictated to you. But this wasn't initially, was it? It was during the, it wasn't approved by the township that you, I mean, when you had your PUD approved, was the stream relocation part of it?
The stream relocation was noted as an improvement in the road improvement agreement, which was executed and then attached to the development agreement.
It was not defined.
Yeah, because we had not, we hadn't gotten far enough in designing it. So we knew we were relocating it, but where exactly in the details of it, we knew we were going to have to go through the.
Quite frankly, we, we, at that time, we thought it would all be within the confines of the existing road right-of-way is what we thought. We didn't realize what a challenge that we had ahead of us and that, and how many different factions and different interests were all going to come into play here.
Now, who brought that up? Was that township?
No.
The Road Commission?
No, it was, it came up, it came up when we started having initial discussions with, with Eagle. And it became apparent that they were very, very adamant about the amount of, amount of stream relocation, the amount of enclosure that they were going to require. We thought we were going to put one long box culvert in, essentially on the line, the existing drain made, and we'd go through the intersection that way at, at a skew. And they, it was very clear when we first started talking to them that they wanted no part of that.
Are there standards for that or do they?
No.
I mean, because there, there's a gentleman who took the time and he'd made a couple suggestions and it, it's part of our packet and I can bring it to you.
Got it.
And, and he, he proposed this lengthening the culvert to, to, to put it across the existing road, you know, from one oh eight to something more than one oh eight, or to relocate it westward, you know, at that T, and so that you, so the road doesn't have to, to, to do the curve.
So these were, these were one of the first two options that we explored. They, they both require the additional relocation of about four hundred feet of the existing stream bed. Right now, the county drain lies immediately on the west side of Stabler Road. I mean, literally, if you go off Stabler Road, you're going to go fall down.
I, I, now, you see, we're almost tripping over each other. I know. Excuse my ignorance, but is there a difference between Honey Creek and a county drain? Or are they the same?
Yeah, they're one and same. It's the same thing. It's the Honey Creek County drain.
Okay, so if it's a county drain and it, and if it's a, a creek, who regulates? DNR or Eagle or the, who's got the?
It's in, it's in the, it's in the road right-of-way. It's also in, it's in a drain easement and it's regulated by the state of Michigan, which is why this is all so confusing and took so long.
Is this a common thing you come up, a hiccup you come up?
This is one of the most complicated ones I've dealt with in thirty-five years, so.
Okay.
You got your questions?
I yield back. So, but I mean, the, the, but the gentleman, Mr. Patterson's drawings look like they make sense to me and would be a viable, potentially viable alternative.
So any, any, any solution that involves leaving Stabler Road where it's at is unacceptable to Eagle because it's going to require an additional forty, four hundred feet of drain relocation, because the drain is right alongside of the road. Okay, the road is, the road is currently eighteen to twenty feet wide. The new road is going to be thirty-eight feet wide to the outboard edges of the shoulders. Yeah, because, because that road out there is nowhere near current safety standards. So it's, it's just a count, it's just a little lane out there. And so everything that you do, if you left the road where it's at, is going to push that drain further to the west, which is a relocation of the existing stream. So that's why Eagle said, you, you need to come up with a solution that minimizes the amount of relocation because you're also proposing this enclosure. And so that's when we started to get to work looking at other options.
Yeah, I have more, but I see other hands up.
So I'll, I'll ask two questions and I'll also make, make a statement since I, one of the things Mr. LeWan always did, which is great, is you have to think about what we're actually trying to do here and the fact that some of this will probably come up again later. Two, two questions, I guess. One, I assume that Trailwoods and/or some common ownership entity of Billmore owns all this land that this is being done on and/or the Road Commission does. So therefore, it doesn't require a private property easement of any sort, correct?
It requires, it's common area of the association, so.
But it's still within the existing county drain easement. And so they have the right to do anything within that easement. So we have to adjust this, we have to adjust the PUD site plan because of implications with the amount of open space and percentage. But it's well within the, the, the road, the Drain Commission can say, we're doing this. It's in our easement. So we're doing it, so.
Pretty much. The only other comment I get, or question I guess I had is, I'm sure, before I do what I did before, I don't want to be metaphorically here for another forty-five minutes about something we're going to ultimately end up talking about again. I think we're all in agreement. This is a major amendment. Well, please, I am. The applicant seems to be.
We welcome, we told the, we told the residents, we would, we would pursue a major amendment, so there, there was an opportunity for a public hearing. So we're, that's fine with us. We're in total agreement.
Other questions that you had?
Just a couple. The right-of-way for the road, is it sixty-six to sixty-six generally on center? Or is the, is the Road Commission right-of-way sixty-six on Park and sixty-six on, on Stabler?
It's greater than sixty-six because we ended up dedicating on the Trailwoods side an additional ten feet.
Yeah, ten or twenty.
Ten, yeah.
It's currently sixty-six plus what you've seen.
Well, it, it was originally, that right-of-way has been dedicated years ago. So it's like, it's thirty-three feet on one side of the center line, forty-three feet on the side of the, of the Trailwoods.
And is there a separate drain easement or is that with?
Correct. There's a hundred, a hundred and, the, the drain easement is a hundred and thirty-three feet centered on the drain.
Do you have any, anything you can present that shows this mapped out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any improvement part of the roads? You're not going to be paving all of Stabler.
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
But where to where?
Well.
Oh, what about Park?
Park, all the way down past the entrances to um Country French and the other subdivision.
Point?
Yes.
But not points west?
No, just, just like about uh fifty feet past west of the intersection.
Fifty feet, so you.
About.
That's what I was hoping would be on something you could show us, a map of, a drawing of, of these changes and how it all lays out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, well, maybe it's on the, the site plan.
Yeah, if you don't have it now.
Yeah. Yeah, here we go, I'll see.
Alright, while you're bringing that up, Commissioner Moore has a question.
So looking at um um, I got sure who's the sponsor of this memo.
Carly Ward.
Oh, I think it's Laura, it's Laura. So I'm, I'm looking at um her memo February ninth this year. And there are about five different things on page four than six. So um you're doing the, provide the narrative explanation of the proposed modifications. Um, uh, provide additional information regarding existing on-site trees to be removed. Landscape plan is required to be signed by a registered landscape architect. Label proposed plantings based on requirement. Um, provide legible landscape plan without overlapping labels. Have all of, any of those, all or any of those things been done?
No, not yet.
Yeah, because tonight, all we, the only thing that we're dealing with tonight, whether it's a major or minor. I, I just wanted to get some history, so people had a chance to kind of
Yeah.
uh, get the perspective before, you know, we.
David and I lived this nightmare for several years, we know, and I know you guys don't have a lot of background on it, so.
Right, yeah, so are there other, I mean, this is just an opportunity to understand a little bit the process, who is involved, all of this kind of thing, and then we'll go to the Carly Ward and then report. Yes, go ahead.
Simple question. The culvert has to be capable for a hundred-year event. Is the current drain capable of handling it?
The, the cross-section of the drain itself?
Yeah, just, I mean, I was out there, if we have a massive.
In, in most places, no, it is not. It, it overflows its banks.
Improving that wouldn't be part of an argument with Eagle?
No, I mean, we're not, we're not doing anything that affects the current cross-section of the drain. It is what it is, and the floodplain is mapped and, and documented. Um, we just can't make it worse, that's all.
So will you actually fill in the, 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 the drain, uh, the eastern?
You're gonna pay more?
And you'll take excavators and dig it out, and I don't know if you put clay in or sand in or wherever you.
We'll probably take whatever we take out for, like, to make the new drain and put it back into the old drain.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's gonna become underlay for your road.
Yes, yeah.
You're raising.
Yeah, we're, we're basically switching the road for the drain. I mean, almost like, so. So I actually, I'll, I'll take what, back what I just said, we'll probably end up backfilling the drain with probably an imported class-two type of material, because it's easier to compact and more predictable, so.
Yeah, and I think as we move forward, I think the other thing that people would be interested in too is y- you know, what, what kind of landscaping, et cetera, happens to the terrain? So what kind of drain restoration?
Yeah.
When, when you do, when you do that. I don't think you have to go into that tonight.
Yeah.
It's just, I think it's, yeah.
The landscaping plan is in the, in the site plan that I submitted.
Yeah, but it doesn't talk about the drain landscape.
Yeah. Oh, it doesn't show up in here. No, we got, we got a lot of, we, I'll make sure that happens. We have a lot of, we have a lot of stuff in the.
Yeah, I imagine you do, but, but I think that's an important part, you know, of the, the project as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is the water quality project, uh, pieces, okay. Yeah, did you have another question?
I got so many, but if I have to wait for the VOT, that's fine too.
Well, they'll be back for a public hearing here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so if there's additional information that you wanna see as a part of that.
You, you said, in one of my notes, you're gonna heavily landscape, wasn't that the word that I wrote down? You're gonna, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do to try to make it white with the residents? What's going there? White oak, red oak, what kind, or, or?
If you look at.
What are you putting up there?
Well, okay, if you look at, there's a, there's a landscaping legend right here, you see down there? That explains all the trees and bushes and everything we were planting there. Like, black hill spruce, service berries, red sunset maples, junipers. Alan Nymark? I don't know what that is.
It's a shrub.
Okay.
Shrub tree, it's a very.
It's a, it's a shrub that wants to be a tree.
There's, there's no decent trees there, because it was never, it was always farmland, and it was just shrub that grew back up.
Yeah.
The only woods are further up the road, maybe a quarter mile, that's where all the nice timber is. There's a lot of white oak up the street, few, few walnut.
Okay, thank you, yeah, and just because we, you know, we have certain meeting procedures, um, we really have to be care, uh, only people who are knowledge can speak. I'm trying to be polite and make sure, but yeah, okay, but thank you. Um, so with that, we'll go to Carly Wardman and then OHM's.
Sure, so, I mean, most of my um information has been discussed, right? We're here tonight to determine whether it's a major or a minor amendment. Um, and based on the ordinance, it appears that with the relocation of the road and the reduction in the open space, that it would constitute a major amendment. Um, what that means is uh after, after a, a motion tonight that it is either minor or major, if it's considered major, we would have to go back and um publicize a public hearing, so it's likely that would be the end of April. Probably the first available planning commission meeting that we would hold a public hearing. We would notify everyone um within three hundred feet and probably a little further than that, based on how, how the road is shifted. And then um the planning commission will then review, you know, I, I provided an initial review for amendment to the PUD, but um they would provide a revised plan, and we would ensure that all the comments in this review have been, have been met. And then the planning commission would make a recommendation to the board. And then since this is a PUD amendment, I would have to um talk to Mariah. I'm not sure, since it's a PUD, I don't know if the board will also hold a, a public hearing. I think that they will. They did for other major amendments that we've had uh in the past. And then they would um make a final determination adoption of, of the ordinance. It's essentially a rezoning, right? It's a rezoning of property um based off a new plan. So I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Just one. Uh, you said, well, we'll determine whether it's a major or minor tonight. If you say it's a major, it doesn't go to the VOT for their.
It will not, it will not go until you hold your public hearing and you make a recommendation to them.
Okay, and just for our new planning commissioners, it, it, it's sort of in your memo, but would you just highlight in, in maybe for anybody who's attending the uh standards for, you know, major or minor amendments? And, and maybe talk just a bit, this is a little education, um, when, when you do a, a minor, you know, what the, what the procedural difference is for a minor versus a major.
Sure, so if we were determined that, so in the, in the ordinance, section thirty-six, two-five-four outlines um items to be considered a major amendment, and they include change in the concept of the development, change in use or character of the development, change in the type of dwelling unit, change in the number of dwelling units density, change in non-residential floor area, change in lot coverage or floor area ratio of the entire PUD, change in the character or function of any street, change in land area set aside for common space or the relocation of such areas, and change in building height. And then anything, it says the following changes shall be considered minor, a change in residential floor space, minor variations in layout which do not constitute major changes. And so if this were considered a minor change, uh, a public hearing would not be required. Uh, they would only have to resubmit the site plan. And so that's the difference in the major and minor. Major is actually a rezoning, and the minor would be a just site plan approval.
Thank you very much, that's, thank you. Alright, um, and we'll move to OHM.
Good evening, um, our letter doesn't actually.
Sorry.
Am I good to go?
Yeah. We didn't expect you.
It's because I turned my video on. Our letter doesn't actually pertain to the determination of if the amendment will be considered major or minor. That's not something that we um provide input on. We leave that to Laura and her team and the rest of you guys. Um, but we did recommend preliminary approval of the plans in our letter from March fifth. We just had two outstanding comments. One of them was to provide the Eagle permit, which it sounds like is still in the works, or any applicable correspondence so that we can have it on file. And then we'd also like to see a project derivative on the plans, just outlining the proposed changes and the process um to get to where we are today. Um, as always, um, and for the new commissioners, we have final um comments in our letter that we typically include as a benefit to the applicant. Those do not affect our recommendations. They can be addressed later in the review process.
Thank you very much. Um, any uh questions for OHM or?
I don't, I don't know who this question is more properly, should be more properly before, but I'm just kind of following up with what, what Mr. Patterson said about um is there a, is there a document, an email, or a letter from Eagle saying that we're the ones that get the final say?
Not really, no.
Or is that statutory?
Pretty much, I mean, you know, the, the pecking order is local government, county government beats local government, state government beats, beats county government, so.
No, is there, is there correspondence? Is there a, is there a record, paper trail?
We've got a couple of emails, but that's, I mean, we don't have anything that, that, that they give us a directive or anything, that's not, they would not ever do that, so.
You don't, you don't have an email or a letter saying that, as you know, pursuant to.
Nope, nope.
You do have an approved permit.
We do.
So that is, is that in here?
Yeah, that's the permit from, that we received last year.
Yeah, yeah, we have, H was the one that was objectionable to the residents, but.
Yeah, I get it, but is that in here?
In, in where?
In our packet.
No, I don't.
We can provide that. Because that is historical, that is what Eagle has approved.
Yep.
And you're trying to deviate from what Eagle has approved.
Yep.
Is there any risk that they're gonna say, no, we've looked at this, we only approved what we took thirty-two months to decide on? Is that a risk?
Is, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is there a risk that they won't approve this current iteration? And then they'll revert back to like, we told you what you need to do.
That's within their prerogative.
So I'd like to see it.
But as I understand, Scott said earlier that they intimated that this would be likely.
They, they said they were, we're not gonna tell you, we're gonna approve it, but they said that this, this is the least objectionable of all other alternatives that you have presented. Which we read between the lines and said, okay, it's, it's a, we're adding twelve feet of culvert to the, to the box culvert to the whole thing, and we're rotating the culvert a little bit, and so the, the difference between the permitted solution and what we're proposing now is really quite minimal, so.
It moves everything westward.
It moves things away from the, the subdivision residents, yeah.
Now, now, some have said, or asked some residents, what about the, as an option, leaving Stabler and Park uh dirt roads? Is that, who makes that call?
The Road Commission. That's not an option either. We, I mean, trust me, David doesn't want to pay for, like, to pave those roads, so. But that's, that's the Road Commission. The Road, part of, that was a contingency of the Road Commission's approval. That we're gonna put more cars on these roads, these roads need to be all-weather and lower maintenance.
Yeah, and I think it would be good to have, and just as we're preparing for this, sort of a packet of, this is what was um proposed before, so everybody has those documents, and then um it, it's gonna be a big packet, folks.
I'll get it from Laura.
And then any sort of docu, uh, emails that you have from Eagle with the discussions that you've had. And I, I, I understand that, you know, until you permit it, they're not gonna actually make a commitment.
No, they're very tight-lipped about what, you know, they do. It's not, they're not in the business of, of saying, oh, sure, why don't you, let, let us help you design this, and, and, you know, they say, they say, just put it on paper and submit it to us and we'll react.
And then I think the other thing that would be helpful is just a link, if they do have some published standards for, you, what they um y- you know, what they developed, kind of as you were going through this process, just a link to those.
I don't know that, I don't know that those exist. I mean, they were, they were forthright with us and said, told us that they've adopted these new standards, but they, these new goals, but they don't have any standards of review or anything to hold the.
Okay, well, anything that they have that they, that, that they actually can document, I think, would be helpful.
We know what they finally accepted, that's the only thing.
And you're saying that was verbal?
Yes, well, I, yes, I'm pretty.
But they may have worked on it. It's been a while.
Sure, okay.
I, I think the other thing um that, that would be helpful, um, a- as you said, all the, the landscape plans, so we have a, a good idea of the the whole scope.
The coverage.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Redder eggs would help.
I, I, I have one final area of inquiry, and it has to do with the Road Commission's position with respect to a guardrail. Am I to take away from your statement earlier that the Road Commission doesn't want a guardrail? Edges?
Yeah.
Even though there's gonna be a culvert, it's seven foot tall and twelve foot wide. I guess that's where you don't want to go up the road.
So they wanted us to extend it out into the, the clear safety zones, so that wasn't, when we were shortening it up to be closer to the edge of the road, that required a guardrail to be on top of it. When you lengthen it out so that it's in a runout zone, it doesn't require the guardrail.
So we could potentially move it westward if we convince them to go with the guardrail?
No, moving it westward is still, moving it westward is still relocating four hundred feet of additional drain that runs right alongside of Stabler Road.
It's moving the creek that's a problem.
Right.
Not moving the culvert.
Right, so.
Alright, any other information? Yes.
When you extend the culvert out, you're gonna be putting earth over the top of it.
Correct, yes. At a four-on-one slope.
Like a, like a shoulder of the road.
It'll be, it'll be, you know, uh turf grass, essentially, I mean, it's, it, but it's not just a gentle four-on-one slope that goes out, so it's not a danger. You know, presumably, the idea is if someone leaves the road, they have enough time and distance to recover before they go into the, into the drink.
Okay, but basically, it's meeting the, the.
It's highway, highway standards, yes, exactly.
Alright, anything else that people, so that when they come back, they're prepared with appropriate information?
My only other point is, this gentleman's here with a, with some presentation or question. If he wants three minutes now, so that they can reply to him before they leave, because we're gonna talk about solar, I'd be okay doing that, but um, I'd, I'd yield to the, what the body wants.
Okay, uh, people in agreement with that? Then by consensus, I'll open public comment.
To this gentleman.
To our, our.
And, and I would also say that
Yes.
He said he brought a thumb drive, and maybe we could be working on getting his presentation.
Can you put things on a flash drive?
Well, if you give it to me, I can join the Zoom, and we can put it up so everybody can see it.
Does he have three minutes to?
Yeah, no, yeah, it's a, thank you.
This is a, my product of the meeting earlier in last June. Right.
Right.
I, I think it's hurt, I'm gonna have to. Or maybe, do you have a flash drive that you can plug in, or are you?
I can plug it into my computer.
Since we're already on this.
Yeah, sure. We will, we will have to charge you.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
A lot of, a lot of good engineering, I can say, but a little guessing here and there.
Alright, now, and sir, if you could, um, typically, public comment is three minutes, so uh if you could.
Are you serious?
I'm curious, yes.
Why?
So just go as, as quickly as you can, yeah.
I looked on that corner, uh, I bought the farm second.
Are these, are these photos? You want me to start and?
Try to, try to. Uh, I haven't started any yet. Try opening one. I, actually, they're named, they're numbered in sequence.
Okay.
Just go from one to the next.
Alright.
Oh, uh.
That's a Word document.
Oh, try to, go to the zero one first.
Okay.
Everybody has this page already.
Okay, and, and. Okay, and, and for the record, would you give us your name?
Oh, this is the meeting we had last June, and. I think those are, that's you guys.
Probably.
Could be.
Okay, go to two.
That was two, we'll go to three.
Oh, three, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's us, the good looking guys there.
Less gray hair.
Still don't have any hair.
Okay.
Sixty-five eighty.
Oh, this is the whole area around here.
Yeah.
This is twenty-three acres of the township owns. This is Honey Creek, how it runs down. That's the next one over, that's your proposal here, how you want to do it. You want to go to the next one then? This is a map of how Honey Creek runs across, this is the interstate. So you have some idea how it wanders through your township, sort of made the people, the whole.
Yeah.
Can you go to the next one? This is a map, and it shows all the development, everything undone here. It would be interesting to know exactly where all the county drains are, but the part we're discussing is right in this area here. And I see this area here is very important since the township owns it. You guys got to stop thinking about nuts and bolts and think more about aesthetics. You have said nothing about aesthetics in this whole thing. And that whole group of people that was here last year, they were interested in coming out to this area. You know, they have bike paths now going here and here, all the way across the county. This would make a wonderful little development. Anyway, the bridge. Like they said, if you move that creek over just to this point here, then you can run through this whole area, you could even put a pond in there. And it would be a nice destination area for people that want to bicycle out, because you're getting, you're developing this area. This is just, it's like Central Park. If they didn't do it when they did it, it would have never happened because it would have been overgrown. It's really important that you hold on to these things and develop them nicely now, like Homestead in New York City. You know, it was a major development, they tore a few things down to build that, anyway. Can you go on to the next one, please? Yeah, this just shows how the creek jogs around, there's a bridge here and a bridge here. My proposal was to move this, go sideways and then up a little bit, and then do whatever you want in this area with pond area.
And this, this, this one illustrates exactly, you know, what I've tried to explain. The, the drain running right down alongside the road, any, any. Proposal that keeps Stabler Road exactly in its spot right now, and the widening that's caused by a new modern road. Is going to require the displacement of this entire section of drain, that's what Eagle was not eager to.
Anyway, go on to the next one, please. This was a, a rough sketch of what I thought, you know, you could possibly do with it. You know, just instead of going through up like this, you know, make a little dive and then put the bridge in this area here. These are property lines. This is where my farm is, it's a centennial farm. There's bike paths that run here, there's also a big. Township Eastman that goes from here all the way across between the Mogo Home Park and my property. It's road area that's also owned by the township that a lot of people are just not aware of. It's got, it's like a sixty-foot eastman. Can you go on to the next one, please? These are typically, these are mostly in Vermont. This is something I had in my mind is an aesthetic approach toward the issues. These are different examples of old stuff. Can you go to the next one, please? Now, here's a new one that has a covering on it, this is what I proposed. You can see the culvert in here to. What I want is something that looks nice. All right, as well as being functional, the culvert's given the right aesthetic shape and structure engineering-wise. And the, the, this outside here provides the guardrails that. The county wants on the side of the road. Could you go to the next one, please? These are bigger, more commercial, but serve the same idea feeling. Not quite as aesthetic as the other one. Next one, please. This is just more of the same. Next one. This is sort of a plan view. The farm that is there, it's a centennial farm, although the last family was Yedley. The farm was really Lobbendire, old German family, they're the one that built it originally, but. I don't think, and I thought it would be nice to have a cut stone in there, so people could say, well, let's go out to the Lobbendire.
Okay, I just want you, can you finish up your presentation, please?
Next one, and this is just a reverse view of the other one, this is sort of giving you an idea, a fresh view of the whole thing. And this is typically how those culverts work. Change it anyways, and I think I'm at the end of mine. Make your picture.
Okay.
Oh, that's, that's a picture.
That's the end, okay, so, I mean, the point is, you know, think holistically about the land that the township has. And also think about what that culvert is going to look like, and are there some aesthetic options?
We don't want to see the culvert. Unless we're going under the road.
Okay, thank you very much.
Daniel?
I hope that was helpful.
Okay.
I use anything, but nothing's gotten through.
We will still have our typical public comment after, at, at the end of the meeting, for anyone else who would like to.
Dale Newman.
Dale Newman, is that correct? Dale Newman, that is your name?
It's on, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
On my.
All right.
Second page.
Thank you very much.
I have a email address in there.
Okay, then we are closing public comment at seven fifty-six, thank you very much. All right, so commissioners. Is there some discussion, I guess we need a, let's go ahead and do a motion, and then we'll. Have discussion. So I believe there is a model motion?
I was moving the model motion to.
Thank you.
This is as a major. Change to P U D, and I can't find like. And I can either read it. Or leave it when I just.
Go, why don't you read it to the record?
Okay. On, on S P twenty-four zero zero five Trailwoods P U D amendment. Based on the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting, the planning commission finds that the subject amendment to the Trailwoods P U D. Is a major amendment as proposed by the applicant and reflected in the minutes of the meeting. The amendment is to relocate the existing drain or creek, relocate Stabler Road and associated right-of-way. Conversion of point five six acres of. Open space to the right-of-way, removal of point of twenty-five previously planted greenbelt trees. And removal of eleven native existing on-site trees. I see no. Additional conditions to be made.
Do you, do we need certain criteria because pursuant to section thirty-six dash two fifty-four of SIO's ordinance? It changes the character or function of the streets, specifically Stabler Road.
Findings?
Yes.
And, and we normally speak findings, okay. Yes, I, I'm willing to supplement your.
Please go on.
Please do.
This, this, this commission finds that the, the amendment as proposed, it proposes a change in the character or function of any street. Specifically, Stabler Road and or Park Road at that intersection. As well as it changes the land area set aside for common space and, or the relocation of that common space. And again, that's spelled out in thirty, section thirty-six dash two fifty-four, the SIO township code ordinance.
Thank you, and is that?
Yes.
Acceptable, all right? Is there support for, or support by Commissioner Apple? All right, discussion. Any?
I'm a little bit confused.
Yes.
So I want to just clarify, this Hyde motion is just. Saying that the, it's a, a major amendment, blah, blah, blah. We're not approving anything about trees or anything like that.
Nope, nope, it just says it, it's going to get advertised, it, it's basically saying you're going through a rezoning process. Yeah. Okay. All right, any other discussion?
I do have a question, since we're going to be establishing the public hearing with this motion. Will there be any reason to expect Eagle or the county road commission to come in and answer some questions directly? They don't do that, do they?
Typically not, I mean, we could, it doesn't, we could ask.
It wouldn't be Eagle.
You might get the road commission, you will not, you will not get the state of Michigan in here.
Why do you say that, sir?
Why?
Yeah.
I've been doing this for thirty-five years, and then they just, they won't do it, they won't write a letter, they won't, they just won't do it. It's not, it's not in their job description, their, their job is to evaluate what's put in front of them, not to make public comment or, or. Go out of the way of the normal business that they have to carry on, it's just from experience. And most, most of them don't live anywhere around here either, so. You, you are, you are welcome to reach out to them, though.
Please. I, I would just suggest that the road commission.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, then.
Call the question.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call. Hyde.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Rothney.
Yes.
Riser.
Yes.
Olbertson.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Walsh, yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
When would this be?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the public hearing notification requirements, but probably the last meeting in April here, which would be April. I annotated it. April twenty-second.
Do we need to schedule that now through a motion, or you'll just do it?
We will just do it. Whoever, if we can make the April eighth meeting, we will, but it's likely we probably have passed the deadline, the.
For notice.
For notice.
Yeah, right.
Guys, you guys are ultimately hoping for approval expeditiously to do this this construction season, correct?
I think that the, the new permit from the state is the long lead item here anyways.
Yeah, I was going to say, why are we pushing it, we don't even have to find.
Well, I mean, we're, we are hopeful to get that, I mean, our, our window for constructing this. Begins after the Fourth of July, because that's when the water levels are typically at their lowest, and it's the, it's the safest time to be working. You know, in an environment like this. And so we're hopeful that we can get the permit by, by that time, so.
So as I understand the timelines, we need to know if you're going to get permitted. Right, and when do you expect Eagle?
Well, I mean, they're, they're both, they're both necessary approvals, but, but this.
When do you expect Eagle to give you?
Eagle, the state of Michigan?
Final decision on this proposal, this latest proposal.
Probably about in ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's.
An Eagle approval isn't needed for planning commission recommendation, it will be needed before they, for, for construction. But not before this body or even the, the board of trustees.
I'm just, I understand that, but I'm just saying, because we're all different bodies, but my point is, is why are we rushing around? You got a hundred and twenty days you're looking at before you even get a permit.
Well, it's going to take that, this, this group, going through the board of trustees and everything like that, it's going to take all of that time.
Ultimately, the time it goes to the board, it's back to us.
Yeah, well, so.
Public hearing.
It, so it, it, we will schedule a public hearing, it's likely that's going to be the end of April. The board is all, if you recommend approval at that time, the board's going to have to hold a public hearing too, so. That'll be the end of May at the very earliest, it may be the beginning of June before they get before the board for a public hearing. And they may or may not make any, take any action at the public hearing, they, they sometimes don't, so then you're looking at the end of. June or early July before they get board approval, so. Which is, yeah. So, they're right on track, I think, for their. For their construction.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand why April eighth versus April twenty-second was all that important.
It's not, I, we would, we would just try to make the next.
It might not be, or it might, you can't tell, but ju- just so. You guys understand the timeline, we don't want to start construction of this later, any later than we have to. Because the idea is to get the work done so that it isn't winter time and the road is still closed, right? Because we have to close the road down to rebuild this, so. The sooner that we can get started, assuming we get the necessary permits and approvals, we'll get it done before winter time. We wouldn't start this in August, because then you'd have that road closed.
There's no way we're going to be completed.
And the road commission would say, just wait till the next year, and.
How long will we, how to commission about?
Ninety days?
No, longer than that, I mean, it's going to be probably about four months.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's really the.
Now, are we throwing to the same time where you call the favor?
No, both of, both of them at the same time.
Intersection will be closed.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And we do, just as history here, we also still have a second improvement to do, which is the bridge to the north on Stabler. And clearly, we can't do all of that, or otherwise people need helicopters to get out of it, so. So, the, the, once we get this improvement done, then we'll move on to the next one, so it's.
Is that also part of our approval, though?
It's part of the, yes.
It's already been approved.
It's in, it's in the, it's in the road improvement agreement that was part of the P U D. Development agreement.
But it's not being modified in any way, that portion is the same portion that was originally.
That one's simple.
Yeah.
We think.
And, and so we should probably have those documents to the, of the P U D agreement and the.
Put them in there, so the public can see them and click on them and they'll print them or not, but at least they'll have a good reference point for that public hearing, please.
Didn't your meetings with the, the residents, did it come up that closure? That intersection?
Yes, they, they're aware, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate your time. Sorry, it's a little confusing, we really weren't expecting to be going through this in substance, because we're already agreeing to the major method. But when we, when we see you next, we will have a full presentation for you.
No, I think, but it was good for the orientation and then to make sure we had everything together for our, our next meeting.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys have a charters. I don't, so, I don't, I don't, I have no idea who you represent.
I don't actually, I don't.
Next is our renewable energy discussion and. Would you like to kind of go over?
Sure, so since we last, do you guys, you guys? Um, that's our last meeting. I don't know if you're aware, but there, there are a lot of legislation changes that are also happening around. And that's not just solar, that's wind and also battery storage, and so. After our initial discussion on solar, Carla Wartman as a group, we sat down and we talked about these legislation changes. And how to bring those forward altogether to our clients, and so I tried to put together some information for you here. But primarily, the thing you need to, we need to know is the state wants to or has taken steps to. Limit local control of large-scale energy projects, whether it's solar, wind, or battery storage.
Beyond their recent statutory changes.
No, this is the, what's the one I'm talking about, they haven't gone in, so they, they're, they're incrementally going into effect. With the, with the last one being November twenty-ninth, when if you don't have this C R E O, this ordinance that goes by the state legislation. Then these energy companies are going to be able to come forward and say, hey, state, they don't have an ordinance, they don't have a complying ordinance. We're, we want the state to review and approve the large, the large-scale energy. So what I tried to do here is kind of break it up for you, because. The large scale is a whole nother discussion, and I think that when you look at the map that I did for you. I don't know that SIO collegiate is really going to have to be concerned about. A really large-scale energy pro, project, there just isn't enough available acreage within the township. Near utility, a major utility line, there's only one utility line, I T C, that runs north and south through the township from SIO Church Road to Joy Road. And it's just east of Zeeb, and it kind of goes, you know, east of Zeeb, directly north, and then kind of winds through Polo Fields Common, Common area. And then across Jackson. And it kind of goes, you know, east of Zeeb, directly north, and then kind of winds through Polo Fields Common, Common area, and then across Jackson Road, and then across the river. Um, and so on this map, you can see the, the solid red line is the location of the I T C line. We put a half-mile radius, those are the red and white dotted lines, and then parcels greater than twenty acres in area are yellow. And then we also added all the conserved parcels. So there are several large parcels along that quarter, but many of them are already part of our preserved or conserved um, agricultural lands.
Do you want to continue on?
Let me, yeah, so, 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 so that's the large scale, and I think as, as uh, as your consultant, I would like to, before we get too in-depth with that portion of the ordinance, I would like to talk to Mariah and get some feedback from her. Um, but I presented to you all the information, so you can review it and, and take some notes, but I really think we need to vet it with the township attorney before we determine if, if you wanna move forward with this C R E O type.
And that would be, those are the really large ones.
Large, the fifty. The fifty megawatt.
And a hundred megawatts of uh, wind, yes.
Can, can I ask you a short question, sorry, Lauren, um? You said something a minute ago that yellow was parcels greater than twenty acres. And then you said, are you saying most of those yellow parcels are also going under the green as well?
No.
Okay.
I'm saying that we're showing you the, the parcels over twenty acres are yellow that are not conserved, that are not, that are not preserved. That are, you know, with, and those are only the ones adjacent to or nearest um, the I T C line, cause that's where they're gonna, that's where these companies are gonna look first, is for the most direct route to existing substations and power lines.
So.
Not only are the, well, let me just, not only are there those yellow areas. Okay, go ahead.
Finish, please.
No, you go ahead and do it.
You were asking the same question I was going to, only where I was going was, can you string the generation systems together so that it wouldn't all have to be on a contiguous block? So therefore, there's plenty of space here for a hundred megawatts, if they were to skip from one to the next to the next.
It's fifty per solar. It's fifty per solar.
Fifty, so there's much.
Fifty per solar is around four hundred acres.
So I just wanted to point out, it's within the capability to do it if they wanted to string them together.
If they wanted to string them together. There are areas of the county and um, the surrounding in Monroe County, Washtenaw County, Lenaway County, Livingston County, that have much more contiguous open area than SIO Township.
Absolutely.
And so I think that's why we have not been inundated with questions about large-scale solar, um, and that's not to say that we won't, um, but we aren't low-hanging fruit, I guess.
Low-hanging fruit, but it's capable. It wouldn't want us to.
Well, I, I agree with that. I agree with that, but so now that becomes a, a, a different question with this um, state legislation that's coming down, whether or not it makes sense to have um, a separate ordinance that has to meet all of the state requirements, just so we can review it and say, yep, you meet the state requirements. Uh, so that's, that's the legal question that we need to, that we need to ask, and, and, and that will come back to you and it will eventually end up at the board level.
And, and then there's whether or not the um, uh, petition or what goes, gets on the ballot.
Correct. There's, so, so while all this legislation is pending to happen, right, there's also a counter, counteract, a petition to, like a referendum that can happen um, that would go on the ballot, and I don't know, I don't know the status of that. Um, I just know that they're seeking petitions and hoping to get on the August or November ballot as well.
So this yellow space that's right at Marshall and the, is that Wing Farm? Probably, so. Yeah.
Yeah. So aside from the large scale, which we know we have to talk about, and we're gonna do that later, the two other items are the accessory use um, which we currently allow. We talked about that the last time. There just is really nothing in ordinance that says, yes, we allow roof and um, accessory solar array for, and for really anybody, whether it's commercial or residential. And so in this packet, and I, you know, I, I, I just want, I, I provided this so you could take time to really review it, and I don't, I don't anticipate any comments tonight or um, in-depth discussion. But I did add, in the existing accessory building section of the ordinance, thirty-six, thirty-nine, where it talks about building-mounted and ground-mounted solar energy collectors, which are not part of a commercial or principal-use solar system, are considered accessory structures and shall meet the accessory building, you know, accessory building requirements of the district that they're located in, which is what we do now anyway. We're just saying in our ordinance, that's how we're gonna, we're gonna uh, interpret it and, and um, utilize the ordinance. So the bigger question is, and which is why we kind of started with this, this map, um, it's these in-between commercial facilities, right? They're not, they don't meet the threshold, the, the um, nameplate size of a solar, wind, or battery storage operation. Um, the, the local government can still regulate those, if they're a solar that's less than fifty megawatt, if they're a wind farm that's less than um, a hundred megawatt, or battery less than fifty. So right now, your ordinance, we only have wind in your ordinance, which is really bizarre.
Yeah, I noticed that.
And so there, there, they are decent standards, but if, if, if for some reason a large-scale wind would come, you know, in November, that would. So um, really, the, this exercise is just to kind of start getting some information to you so that you can start thinking about, okay, if we were to have um, a smaller-scale solar facility, where would that make sense to be located? Should it be in a specific zoning district? Should it be in an overlay district? Um, I don't know the answers to these questions. Every community does it a little bit differently, but what would work for, for SIO Township? And if, if um, you, we are gonna have this type of district, what types of um, additional regulations do you wanna place on it? What kind of setbacks? What kind of screening? What's the height of the, the solar panels? Um, a- all, all those things. The state is gonna tell us what we can regulate for the large ones. How do we wanna regulate these mid-size, mid-size ones? Um, and I work in a lot of communities and all of them do it a little bit differently.
I, I think one of the things that I wanted to make sure that we in, include in, in any size is the um, sort of the, the, not just the buffer landscaping, but um, it, it.
The ground cover?
The ground cover, and um, and I know um, oh, what is his name? Heady.
Really, underneath, like needed?
Yeah, yeah.
Plantings underneath for panels?
Underneath, the panels, yeah, so because the, a lot of the typical installations are, yeah, you put a weed barrier down and you put gravel, and it, we really don't, that's not helpful at all. Um, you know, that, that, that's like almost as bad as a parking lot. So, yeah, we would really want to make sure that.
I'm missing, I don't, I'm kind of don't know enough about it, so I'm not understanding the issue. You're talking about having like a cement platform?
I know they, uh, well, what they often do is because they don't want to, it's, it's cause they difficult to maintain.
They don't wanna mow.
They don't wanna mow, so they put a weed barrier down and put gravel on top, and what the better practice is, is, you know, and, and we'll be doing it at the fire station is putting, they have some um, uh, actually seed mixes that work underneath it, um, and.
Grass seed mixes?
It's a, it's a, like a, a wildflower. It, they attract pollinators and so forth, so this isn't a, a wasteland. It really can be um, you know, a um, somewhat.
Beneficial.
Beneficial. Environmentally beneficial, uh, if you do it in a.
Still doesn't.
What's that?
Still doesn't need mowing?
No. No.
No, doesn't need mowing and it can grow too tall because of the panels.
Right, they, they minimize the, now, and, and it'd be, it'd be interesting to find out from, I think his name was David Chinch or something, they did it, um, I, I think it, it was a, a, a kind of a community-scale solar, and they've done it, it would be good to kind of follow up with them on um, how the maintenance of that has, has been, because obviously, you know, you don't want, I mean, the fire department doesn't want, you know, things, tall things thrown, you know.
So you're suggesting that we have a um, guidelines in the ordinance for plantings, and they should present a, a, a proposal as part of the site plan for plantings, and also the layout so that they don't have to make a soil dump action. Uh, because we're gonna want them to put it back decommissioned. They're gonna put it back to the way it was. So they should have to submit a plan for that too.
Yes, so, so I, just so you know, I, I um, I'm mostly familiar with solar because of my work in Augusta Township in the southeast corner of Washtenaw County. Um, I have reviewed three sol- large solar facilities in their, in their township that include of around sixteen hundred acres. And so, and they were, there were three different um, projects. The first one was a, they're all special land use. The first one was approved, um, and actually I just received the final site plan today, and we first started that project ten years ago. Um, the second project was in a location of the township that um, rece- you know, this was during COVID, so four years ago, that received a lot of um, uh, feedback from residents. They did not want it in this particular location of the township. And so they, the company actually moved the project further south near the first um, the first approved project, and that was also a special land use that went through the, the process and actually was denied and then was finalized through litigation. And I just, they're doing both those final site plans at the same time, and I received those today, so I, I have, I have looked at several iterations of ordinances for, for this type of thing, and um, I, I can, I can provide a lot of feedback on, on good ordinance standards um, for all of those, for all of those things. The issue, it, not its issue, we can make it really great for these, these um, small-scale community ones, but we're gonna really have to determine through Mariah embedding, you know, what, what of those, what types of those standards we can move to the large scale, because it's gonna end up being a test. It's gonna be, have to be tested, um, because the, the legislation doesn't talk about um, ground cover. It doesn't talk about screening. It doesn't talk about, um, it, it really says, these are the setbacks, this is the size of the facility, this is the type of fence you can have, this is the type of lighting you can have. Um, and, and that's it. It doesn't talk about.
So ours would be more.
Well, for a small scale, we can, we can provide any um, you know, reasonable standards that we want, but for a large scale, technically, the law says we can't be more restrictive, and so that's why I'm saying we have to, it's gonna be um, a conversation with the attorney and then uh, uh, and then in, in the long run, um, uh, you know, uh, a decision on, on what, what's worth the fight, right? What's, what?
Yeah, and, and I think it, it may make sense just because we don't know exactly what's gonna happen with this petition drive and so forth to, you know, work on the standards, and then if, you know, i- if we can apply those to the large one, great, it's set, and if we can't, then.
I mean, they may regulate both small scale and large scale and have flaws in there, such that if the state of Michigan adopts something or blah blah blah, I mean, can't we?
Well, they have.
We can, we can, and they have.
If we're, but if we're not preempted by.
Yes.
Ours kicks in.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think that's why we're, we're doing this, we're trying to do this, and so even if, if we can adopt it before November twenty-ninth, we'll have a clause in there.
Right.
Um, and if we adopt it after November twenty-ninth, we'll know if it, you know, if the state um, regulation holds or if it doesn't. So we're just trying, you know, I, I, we just wanna start having this conversation, conversation so that we can continue, continue to build on what we have, right? And start having the conversations we need to have as we get closer to that date and um, have some comfort with what's gonna happen on.
No, I appreciate it because I'm still getting all the lingo.
It's really, it's hard to try to, I mean, I wanna try, help try to finalize some things, but I, I want everybody to be aware that it's, it's really kind of all, all the balls are up in the air being dealt.
And what is the petition about, I'm not.
There is a counter petition, um, break, trying to bring local control back. Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Um, I guess a question, just sort of thinking about, so the decommissioning bond, I guess I think was the, the verbage in there. Uh-huh. I guess we hold it forever until the project's
The project.
Done, or it doesn't exist anymore?
Typically, yeah, I mean, um, I, different, different um, communities have a little different way. A lot of them have, um, they require the decommission bond, and then it, there is a clause that it is reviewed every three to five years um, to, because the, the cost is gonna change, right? And so um, so, yeah, that's something.
Well, look, do these projects usually last? Until they're not profitable, but how long does that?
Well, we don't know, do we, Bob? Cause they're still so new, yeah.
I mean, ti- typically, you know, they say, you know, a solar would, the, the life of a solar panel, like, is about twenty-five years, and after that, it diminishes, but it's still, yes, exactly.
And, and, and we would have, we would have, you know, um, language in there that talks about replacement, and, yeah.
Um, did anyone have, um, it, it, you know, there are different ways, the racking systems are different. Now, it, it, the one, for instance, what we used at the fire station is very simple because it has, you know, it's on the posts, but if you get into those racking systems where they run stuff on the ground and so forth, it really.
I have not, there are no ordinance that has regulated the type of racking system that I've worked with.
Yeah, cause I'm wondering if it could minimize the, you know, that this, this structure and contact with the ground should be minimized or something.
Are there some examples of meeting the large-scale solar farms that we could go through to get a look, see at what they look like, how, how, the impact to the environment, what they've done underneath them?
I'm sure there are.
Are there any you can suggest that we?
I can, I'll have to send them in an email, cause I'll, I'll do some research.
I don't know if there's a larger one than a half hour.
There's one right there in fourteen and twenty-three.
Yeah, but that's small.
Pretty small.
Small, okay.
Um, there's a large-scale one about down where I live in Erie Township, Michigan.
Where is that?
Erie, Michigan, off I seventy-five, there's a quite large one. Uh, there, I, I can find some.
Yeah, I think it would be good to, you know, get, like, a large scale, it would be good to see a couple of them that are different scales. Uh, like, the community solar legislation that hasn't passed yet is at five megawatts, so it's really, um, you know, what does about five look likely, if you find any, and the large scale.
Large will be fine, yeah, and, but I don't know, in between, cause they, they try and maximize the scale, um, and, yeah, yeah.
Your map, this is great, so thank you, and I think that you're, you're on track to steer us towards having an overlay district. No, no, I think it's a great idea, whether it would work or not, whether we could limit it to this area, but uh, if we needed, if they need it to transfer the generated power to the grid, then they're going to need to have a plan for how they're gonna get it there, and this region is the most likely to be uh, a small cost to them. Now, if they go outside of that, how are they going to, do they have to go with a overhead power grid type of thing? I mean, is it major? Or is it just going to be a buried cable underground and no one's gonna?
Well, in a lot of our ordinances, we require it all to be underground.
So the transmission from the solar grids to the power grid?
Does it go to the grid or a substation?
It would have to go to a substation.
It goes to some type of substation, and then it would go into the grid, so I don't know along here if there's a plan or an area where um, we could, you could, there's, that you put a substation, I don't, I don't know, and maybe that's another reason why we haven't been.
That's another reason, but even on a small scale, one would have to have a substation or something.
They would have to build one if there wasn't one, like, build even just a small one.
Even if it's, right, and you say underground, is there corridors for you, for that kind of power trans- for like, underground, I mean, you could carry a cable alongside the road?
I'm not electrical.
No, but like, is that, is that going to right away or until?
Um, I'd have to look at the other projects. I'd have to look at other projects, but I think, I think they can put it in the right of way, and that'd be, you know, then they have to get approval from Washtenaw County or wherever.
At least speak to a commercial building where the high-power transmission comes off of the high-ish power, comes off of the local distribution pole on Jackson Road, goes underground through a conduit that runs alongside the road where it's a shared easement between, this is my property, T T E gas, electric, and SIO water and sewer. All that runs within about a ten-foot easement.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
So then, building on this, I would see, I would like to ask the group. So then, building on this, I would see, I would like to ask the group, if we think that. Well, first of all, you've said that uh here's our protected properties, our preserved properties, but. The question I heard was, can we, can they put solar arrays on the preserved properties? I I know there's been some discussion, has that been established?
Uh you mean, not the silo preserve properties, but the PA one.
Farm like the farmland preservation properties that are part of the PA one sixteen state program. Yes, they can.
What about the? Sciotownship?
No.
And why is that?
That would be part of whatever contract that they've established.
Does it can't have ancillary structures?
Correct, there's a certain percentage of of development that you can do on the preserved land by contract.
And probably each one has a different.
Okay, oh.
And that goes for the agricultural pr- preserved ones too, which is something to have a discussion with with. The land preservation, uh land preservation. I think that I think this works well for the larger systems. I would like to promote especially the community solar, the five megawatts and less, not necessarily to be an overlay district. I I think, I mean, that's kind of where I'm coming from because there there is the need for.
So, but there's, there, so then there, but then there's a, so there's community solar, right, five megawatt or less. And then there's the fifty megawatt or more, but then you have this, then you have this in between. And so is that what you mean, the in between in this location? Okay.
That's what I'm thinking, so that I, cuz I wanna do whatever we can to promote, you know, a community scale solar. Which it seems to fit in much better cuz you're and but to be more restrictive than with the. The large scale that would have a big impact cuz and we don't have a lot of land. And if there, you could put a couple different community solar projects together, um we can't do that yet. Um. We don't have the legislation, but um it doesn't mean that you couldn't like partner with DTE to do a a community solar. Cause a development.
I'm not understanding the overlay issue.
Where you can tell them in your ordinance, this is the zone you can apply for, you can only have it in here.
The large, the larger scale, so as opposed, so if it's not an overlay, what zoning district do you wanna allow it in? And if you allowed it in in agriculture, for example, it could be anywhere in the ag district. But if we if we um restrict it to an overlay, it would just be parcels X. Acre and larger within this, within this area, this.
In theory, not saying we would do this, but in theory, we could make some criteria that makes our map work as overlay in theory.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with this map, thank you, by the way, for the material you put together, map and and. I appreciate all the work you did on this, would the map be medium or larger scale?
Well, that's that's the discussion, right? So I think what Jan just said is she would like five megawatt and less. The community scale to be maybe allowed anywhere in the township in any district. And that this overlay map would be that in between the five to forty nine megawatt. That we can locally regulate.
Right.
And then if it's fifty megawatt or larger, the state's gonna be regulating that and we're probably not gonna be able to say where those can.
We might be able to fill it where, though, if we have good reason.
If we have, maybe.
It but that's up to the lawyers to tell us.
Or if we kept this overlay district, it would also fit in for the larger two.
That's true, and so and so it could, it could work for both, yes.
Is the. Is the goal to get everything on the grid or just medium and large, but not small, small for local use? Under five is for grid use or local use, you know, I mean, it could be either.
Yeah.
In a household could be for.
Yeah, and then the idea about community solar is that eh you, anybody could. Eh eh if it's passed, anyone could develop it and you sell like subscriptions to that solar. So it would work for people that are in apartments, people that can't can't, they don't have enough land, they don't, they're eh they're treated in. They can subscribe and it's locally generated.
As long as it's close by.
Yeah.
And is is ITC required to take that, say, oh, no, we gotta, we got enough, like. We we wanna put in your ITC, but they say, thanks, we're kind of busy to push and wire.
Well, that would be up to the developer of the the solar farm, yeah.
No, but to to convince ITC to let them on the grid, or do they have to, do they have the fiduciary? Uh like, do they have the public trust to to allow allow access to the grid? Uh with locally generated salt.
That's a good question.
That, well, it's not ITC for community solar, it's typically DC BTE.
But it it isn't this the ITC grid?
But that is the ITC line.
But that would be for the larger scale.
But smaller one, you do use the local lines.
Use the local.
So my my point is, we have a, it's nice to rest a plan when ITC does with their wires.
Well, no, it's not, it's not that we're planning what they do with their wires, John, it's that that's where they're located and so that it makes the most sense for. Solar developers to to locate.
I I I right, I'm not, I'm not pushing back by any means, but I'm just saying, are they required to take? A solar generated electricity, do we know?
I think the state is mandating certain percentages of their power.
We're kind of making some assumptions. And ITC is distribution, it's not.
Let's ask a question, let's say we're up here north by Webster Township and somebody's gonna put a community solar facility here, just for simple argument. But people down here by John's house, because they have two A trees, they can't put solar panels there for whatever reason. I I guess we can't legislate nor dictate to DT E and or anyone else to find a way to get the electricity from here all the way down there.
It just goes on the grid, now, the other thing that uh the um. The sustainable energy utility that Ann Arbor is doing eh is is going for a vote, they're gonna vote on whether. They're gonna establish it or not, and and it it isn't necessarily. I depending how it develops, restricted to Ann Arbor. So, um but I mean, that's, but that's, you know, a long time and.
Probably a few years.
Development. Um but anyway, that's another um, you know, uh so that's a parallel kind of renewable energy source, but. So the idea is how do we at least encourage solar um cuz we're gonna need, you know. Quite a bit of it, so, go ahead.
Okay, so the last thing I wanted to bring up was, what I've been reading about. Has, you know, what you might be able to impose. Even in spite of, even if we're talking about the large arrays, the larger solar farms. As long as you keep reasonable about it, you might be able to restrict the locations, et cetera. One of the restrictions on locations that was suggested. By this other group was if you have something in your master plan, it says. That that would restrict this kind of operation, and we do have that in here. Um I think we should refer to our open space land preservation map. Whereas the bio reserves identified as primary, secondary, and tertiary, you know. And we put in there those areas that we don't want in effect to be cut down. You know, to have the trees cut down, um open spaces, one thing, but if you talk about contiguous properties. There's trees on some of these properties, um nothing stops them from cutting down a bunch of trees. Except for our tree artists just have a whole lot of say, they can cut them down and then they have to replant somewhere or pay into a tree fund. But. The corridor that we're talking about takes us right down through several properties that are have been identified as being. Highly desirable, even if they are protected. So even though they're not protected.
But we keep the bio reserve areas outside of that.
The only outside of the.
So, yeah. And.
We lay it in there, but we restrict.
Yeah, and that also might be something that we do put in the the ordinance overall that. Those bio reserve areas, eh you know, are definitely, and and anything, eh I think that's gets into that contiguous tree canopy. We don't, we don't want to, but eh that, in my opinion, it makes no sense. To sacrifice a tree canopy for renewables because of the the um sequestration. Of carbon, of the carbon.
And I would suggest that we update this map as as. Best we possibly can, and and I mean, maybe we don't wanna refer to the master plan version of it, but we might have a. Offline one that is kept up and that's the one that we published separately, but. We still need to refer to the master plan, uh which would pull in the community's wishes into it and then have this other guy.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this strictly from a financial standpoint, if I look at the ITC line and the half mile each and I know some of the areas. Solar farm would never pay off more than something else would, I mean, the value of the land just pretty much says you aren't gonna put a large scale. As Laura said, there's just so much low hanging fruit elsewhere.
But we might have small scale ones or medium.
Well, no, and that's, I think that's where we get back into.
Yeah.
You know, the fifty megawatt, we can put in things like. Fencing, screening, berms or whatever to see if we can get them in there, be not necessarily more restrictive than the state. But just say this is a logical thing for a community to have, so it's not restrictive, but fifty or greater. It's it's unlikely.
I think so.
In this, in this community. Good to get back to it, my, what are the real things, and I think it's probably the community. I mean, it's it's going to be individual, I mean, I look, just looked at mine, in thirteen months, we've generated just over eleven megawatts of power. But I think there is going to be a desire for a community by whether you're in that neighborhood or not, you're still just. Getting the energy, it's the equivalent, and, yeah, it's going to happen.
And well, look, you know, we have, it it's a um. What was heritage woods, yeah, and then I think many hands is gonna come in with the solar array. Um as well, so some of these developments are also um having, you know, that was a one megawatt. And they may come in with more, um because now the other thing is you can, you you can, they upped the. Category two, which is the one that you can um that DT has, they they basically do need to approve it. To five, I think it's five hundred and fifty kilowatts, yeah, it's five hundred and fifty kilowatts and a hundred and ten percent of. So this would be the accessory um is up is up to that um. If you know, which which doubles, more than doubles the size of an array that um and in. Of more intense energy user could could put on, so before they were, they were capped at a hundred and twenty five. Um kilowatts, so uh it it makes it. Um even more feasible because you're then investing in a larger array that um will be. The cost of it will be less per watt and you will get more of your energy out of, you can get maybe up to a, you know, a hundred percent of green. Energy use of it, um because they used to cap it at a hundred and twenty five. DT, yeah, yes.
Do you think, sort of off topic, but on topics as we're talking about master plan, do we think master plan review is gonna come up next year?
Um it's every five years typically by by statute, right, we have to review it every five years, so it was twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty two.
Twenty one.
Twenty one, yeah.
It was November. That we approved it.
Twenty two.
Twenty two.
Twenty two, okay.
Well, we finalized it in twenty two.
Right, that's.
The adoption date was in November, yeah, but, yeah, um.
And you can review it at any time and you can amend it at any time.
And you can amend just certain areas too, so I mean.
If there's something that.
Suggesting we might, we get this map updated.
Yeah.
If we wanna put any kind of effort into restricting the array locations.
Okay, all right, eh any other feedback for for Laura on this?
I'll keep plugging ahead and I'll continue to build on what I've already given.
Thank you.
Okay, and just as a reminder to folks, um. Once there is, we have to actually write the ordinance, there's a public hearing. Um, yeah, it it just, yeah, there's a long process of of public input for it. Yeah, okay, um then we'll go on to our treaty courts. Thank you, Tim, and thank you, John.
My report was sent to uh Christie and Fran for inclusion in the uh packet, so it would be a couple of.
Okay. I didn't do that, eh I think.
I said it's a planning commission.
And that goes, eh eh a copy typically goes to Christie.
Oh, let me send it there, yes.
Okay, so, um.
We do need to update this.
I I've done that several times, actually, and, yeah, so, all right, anything from OHM?
No, we don't have anything to report on tonight.
Okay, um. Hello, what man?
Um Many Hands has submitted, we have our staff meeting with them tomorrow for their preliminary uh PUD. Um there, there are quite a ways from getting to to the planning commission, we have some um items we need to work out. Internally before it's ready to come forward, so look for that in the, you know, near future sometime. Um Firestone, uh we'll be coming back with their site plan room at the next meeting. And we also have a conditional rezoning at the next meeting for a property on North Stabler from IRP to I two. So those are the, those are the ones that you'll see next, okay?
Can I ask a question about Many Hands? Both have mentioned it now, um that's gonna be coming forward. Separately from the other two pieces of property that were going to be split in, so there'd be what? Tension upon that deal going through or?
I can't speak to that, I mean, it's it's been submitted as a project that they want reviewed and so we.
Oh, we don't.
We have, we have, care, we, no, um you know, we don't request or just agreement or any of that information as part of a planned unit development. Proposal, so.
That's sort of their risk, right?
It is out there, yeah.
And then I have some point, update on, I I wanna say urban crossing with that.
Crossroads. Urban group.
Oh, yeah, you're right, or what's the latest with Liberty and Wagner and then up the road a piece to the uh. The left or is uh the old quality sixteen?
So, um for the crosswoods, I have spoken with Dan Kettler, the developer of that property. He will be coming back with a final site plan, um I anticipate anytime. Um I spoke with him in January and it it seemed to me a couple of weeks ago, he was getting ready to submit, so. Um I would expect within the next month or two, I we will be seeing a plan from him.
So, so I have a question, so one of the things on trail woods is that there were. They built stuff and then the the roads and the trail, they're supposed to build a non-motorized, correct?
Correct, that is part of it.
And do they need to get, they need, do they need to get, do they need to get anything from Eagle?
I don't know, um I guess that's a good question, that's something we'll have to look at when it comes down.
I there's a pond there, but I assume that's retention, and do they need to get anything from the road commission? So what what do we, do we wanna make sure that we don't run into a trailwood situation where development happens? But then, oh, this road or this pathway or this creek or this whatever.
Well, this is, you know, trail were, trail was is is a different.
I agree, that's a. Activated hack.
That is much, that is, that is.
That's as tricky as it gets.
Not typical of of.
Yeah, that's huge compared to crossroads.
Yeah, yeah.
But is there?
But no, we, you know, and in our, in our new process too, for example, Many Hands has submitted and in in um. In the past, that would have been noticed for a public hearing, it would have come to you before we, as a staff and um as consultants. Fully vetted the the planned unit development, we're not doing that anymore. Um when a PUD development comes in, we review it, we hold a staff meeting like we do for site plans. And we we kind of vet some of these um, you know, overall issues with the developer. And at the very beginning, we're getting Mariah involved for community benefit and those types of discussions very early on. And so we aren't, we're 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 taking a different appro- approach to these planned unit developments. And so I don't know, I don't know that crossroads is a PUD, it was and then it wasn't, I gotta, I I don't think it is anymore. And so I don't know, I don't know that crossroads is a P U D, it was and then it wasn't, I got it, I I don't think it is anymore. It flip flopped, so.
Office, now it's residential.
Yeah, I think, so I'd have to double check, but I'm not positive that crossroads is a planned unit development, um.
Why would they roll the pad?
I think they are, because there was a height piece in there, yeah.
I'd have to check, but you know, you know, it was a P U D and then it wasn't, and now maybe it's back to the P U D.
Well, it was an office P U D and then it turned into a residential, it came back to us and yes.
It is a P U D because of the height and the density.
Well, one of those.
Did the office they did.
We'll have to go, but I I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to confuse, but so anyway, so, John. Crossroads is coming back as a final P U D or a final site plan. To this body, and you will make a recommendation to the board. And if it's a P U D, we're going to make sure they have all their development agreements and all that good stuff.
It's a P U D, and Live and Live has it in their article.
Okay, well, I don't always. True, so anyway, yes, they're coming back, um Goodrich, uh that.
You go there, there is an issue with the crossroads. Remember, we were talking about how much emissions come from the.
Right, the air quality testing.
Wagner Road and they did air quality testing. At a time where it wasn't fully running, at a time of day where it wasn't fully running, I think that's an issue, so I just thought I'd throw that out there because that's an issue that. Had been brought up by us before.
Yep, and he's aware of that and.
And I did find a a letter from Dan Kettler to the entire Board of Trustees. Talking about P U D and all the public benefits that he was coming to offer.
Well, sorry, you know, from in my defense, I don't know, it's been five years going and it wasn't and then it was. The theater, um so as you recall, the the use, the list of uses came before you. You held a public hearing, it went to the board last summer. Um the board held a public hearing, didn't take action, they um set up an internal subcommittee, which I have been a part of. Jan has been a part of, um for discussions with the developer, we've met several times and refined the list of uses. Um and I think we've um that group, internal group and the developer have come to an agreement. And that will go to the board at their next meeting on um March nineteenth, a public hearing, a public hearing's been scheduled. So.
Are they going with the residential or?
Yeah, there's there's a residential component there, I mean, it's a list of uses so that they can market the property, they do not have a user for this property. And so this whole exercise has been.
Oh, my God.
No site plan, this whole exercise has been to determine the uses that they can market for this property, yes.
Because we turned down the storage thing that they first came out with.
Well, that, well, no, because the the current P U D only allows a theater. The current use that's allowing that property is only a theater, so in order to market it, they want to have a, they want to know. What the township would approve, and so that's.
I understand that, but we, he came, before he did that, he came to us and had to put in. Storage, so we said no, so then he came back and said, what's what's.
Yep, and we're still working on what's doable, so hopefully.
And that's coming back to the planning.
This this portion will not, it will only come back to you when a, when there is a user for a site. Okay.
So is that required, will that require? That would be a major.
It's a major amendment that this body has already recommended to the board. The board has held one public hearing, they're actually going to hold another public hearing because those uses have changed. Um and then the board will either um approve the uses as presented, some. Um modification to that use list as um agreed upon by the developer at that meeting or. They'll table it or I don't know what.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so um my report, basically, um J Rod, we have our first meeting scheduled for March twenty-eighth. So that group is getting started, um those will be open um meetings healthier and so people can join. Um and.
When is that meeting?
March twenty-eighth at four, yeah. Yes, it's. And then uh the tree fund, uh this technically wasn't, it, you know, it. I think Planning Commission needs to be aware of it, but it's the tree fund policy. Um that is being reviewed um by the P P P at their meeting Wednesday. Um hopefully, um it then it it will have to go through um attorney review. And then go to the Board of Trustees, um. The uh I did include uh here, the, we had a meeting in uh late January. Uh it was a cross-section of leadership and employees and so forth, um that looked at. Um prioritizing the environmental sustainability ability um. Is S cap plan of actions and just the tally and and they, what was interesting is a lot of the um. The uh the the majority was around energy and operations. And what's what's good is, um I think it is going to go before the Board of Trustees at the nineteenth meeting. Um is the um it get the okay to submit a grant, a community energy management grant. For it's a hundred thousand dollars and it would be um, you know, up. Updating the options for the replacement of the three HVAC units. Um to include a geo exchange option, um and update kind of, you know, the first cost, operational cost, greenhouse gas emission. Reduction, so we can choose, you know, a a low emissions, look at costs and the redates and things that are included in that. Um and then try and get that done, um at least the meeting room by the end of the grant. Uh because the meeting room has its own unit, so um the rest of it, because we're going to be redoing ductwork and so forth, it's probably a move out. So, yeah, yeah, um so that would be, um that grant would help quite a bit. In 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 moving it along, I think they, the budget number for that, the whole project was like seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that.
Around a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred thousand, we're, we'll be, the proposal is to ask for a hundred thousand and and I think it's um. Uh and then there's some project manager time and the grant and so forth, so hopefully that'll get approved and we can move along with that. Um the tree fund, you might want to it's take a look at it because uh Laura just jumped out, I'll go to something else. Talk about that one again, um transportation, um the um group. Uh Kim, I have to say, you're awesome on that transportation committee, that's, thank you very much, you're. Uh yeah, you know a lot about transportation, so I'm observing. Um but uh there's, they're working on getting a survey out, um. And, you know, get some ridership feedback and get some employer feedback. Uh and then gonna make a recommendation, um you know, to the trustees about the mileage. Um the goal would be to get that on the August ballot. Um so I'll, I'll come back to the tree fund because I want to talk about that. Because it uh it may, there may be some effects to our tree ordinance. So we'll just, uh not with the fund policy, but just uh some other things. Um anything that you want, any feedback or anything on your um Board of Trustees report? Are you good?
Not good.
Any, okay, any questions? Um was only Board of Appeals?
There was no C B A meeting in February, we've got one coming up a week from Thursday. Coming back in asking for height variance to allow for a three-story hotel instead of a two-story. So A R Brower is the applicant this time, I haven't seen the details yet.
It's like they got turned down already. It was a four-story.
Sure, it'd be turned down the four-story.
I see. All right, um D D A.
Uh we had a D D A meeting today, so it was fun, uh. It's two hours long, um. We actually got a presentation by uh. The Road Commission, uh they are going to, and be able to approve their uh approval agreement. You know, driving, many drive will be done this construction season.
Do you know on Meti?
No, on Meti. Uh the D D A is funding their projects in the entirety, uh using funds that D D A had available. Uh the D D A also has approached and uh Christian, which I actually are a meeting, uh. Do some work with the Township Hall Park. Proposal project or, uh we want to word it back here, uh there was discussion about uh potentially the D D A funding. Please show the restrooms that are.
Oh, uh in the utility.
In the utility area, but they're basically built lacking fixtures, I suppose is the best way to word that. Uh they were built a while ago, just never quite got all the way done, um.
Yeah, they're all the rough plumbing's in, but.
The rough plumbing, electrical.
But no sink.
No sink, good.
We're all good.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean.
It's a smaller project, it's four hundred thousand dollars for Vino Drive, uh or sorry, four forty thousand for Vino and many. Uh the Road Commission did inform everyone at the meeting that they're going to be doing extensive roadwork on the. Side of Jackson Road from approximately where Fresh Ford used to be, or the Himalayan restaurant now, I believe. Uh down to about Z, which is short of Z Road.
One lane.
Uh they're going to be replacing almost all of the concrete in the roadway, uh starting June tenth through about October.
For single lane closures.
Single lane closures, but they expect significant traffic impacts.
It's concrete.
Concrete, uh it's about a fifteen to eighteen years old. Um and the best way to prolong the life is to replace the concrete.
Now, was this a section that was done with some of the recycled material?
And the Road Commission actually brought that up and originally the township got a, or the D D A slash the township got a grant for that.
Yeah.
And that area, it's pretty uniform what the wear is. It doesn't seem to me that that area is performing any better.
Worse than the.
Than the rest of the country.
It was.
The D, the D D A also was proposed by the Road Commission, which is a bit of a surprise, I think, I think at least personally. Uh asking for the. Other side of that area, those travel lanes, if the D D A had an extra five hundred thousand dollars available to. Uh complete a similar process on a section of that roadway, the D D A expects to take that up April eighth at a special meeting. Um but that was a surprise, I think. They are also working on wood view comments, uh the Road Commission is to reconfigure the turn lane there later this summer. Uh the D D A also discussed maintenance of the boulevard, which.
Wood to the boulevard, maintenance.
Some Jacksonburg Boulevard, uh. I did outside of the D A, I was asked, I reached out to uh. A couple of our state house representatives, they have expressed interest in potentially granting the fire department some, so that's exciting. I will leave that up to Chief Look to see what came of that conversation, but I had Felicia Brayback actually called me directly. Uh to respond to an email inquiry, so that's to show that sometimes you just ask.
Ask and.
People.
You might get.
Oh.
Um. Yeah, that's it, sorry.
Um.
So the D D A actually came to the meeting?
To. I'm sorry, the road, I mean, the road, the Road Commission, Adam Lape and there was another gentleman, was an engineer, I forget his name.
Right.
Maybe.
It's not unheard of and.
Uh the D, the Road Commission actually has come to many township meetings, so they've come to D D A meetings before, they have come to the Road Advisory.
Yeah.
Then.
Good, good, yeah.
So it's not, it's the goal that is.
Yeah, and the Road Commission generally is very interested in talking to you, especially if you might be interested in helping them do projects.
Okay, um I didn't, I helped the tree fund until you got back, because um uh one of the things that um. We did with the tree fund is uh. Incorporate a little bit of what Canton Township is doing with their um. And upgrading of their ordinance and uh it might be good, I think they're going to do a map. Um presentation when they get the ordinance done, but basically what they're doing is they're keeping their mitigation in it. But they're giving, they're using um an iTree software and is an option for people to do. An individual assessment if they want, so the way that they're um adjusting for their um. Um the uh. Litigation that happened was providing options to the developer and what they're finding typically is. The developers are choosing the mitigation option because it's straightforward, they know what the 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 dollar incentive is, so. But what's interesting about this iTree and anybody can go in there and it. Um it does, it appears to underestimate necessarily when you're doing an overall canopy um calculation. Um but it will take uh the trees and it provides the the value of. Um the CO, the CO two, the sequestration, the benefits for stormwater and so forth. And so it's the, you know, how much is sequestered, how much stormwater is absorbed, all this kind of stuff. And provides a dollar amount and it's a US Forest Service um kind of thing, and you can do it for a lot. You can do it for uh the whole township, you you know, so forth, but it's a way of providing then. Um a nationally kind of recognized calculation for the benefit. It's called iTree.
As in.
A little I, little I, yeah. Yeah, a dash tree, yeah, yes. And it's, i- if you Google iTree tools, I think it's iTree tools.
Tool.
And that's, that's a, what does it show?
It, what is it, what does it show if iTree? Yeah, so you can go in and, for instance, you can go in and say SiO Township. And it'll come up with the um tree canopy coverage, which is like thirty point eight percent, they say. And um where uh SEMCOG says ours is fifty-one point seven percent. So there's a difference and and the forester that was there said. It it probably is because they're looking at more contiguous canopy as opposed to it, like individual street trees and things like that. Where what SEMCOG does is, you you know, it's it's tree cover rather than contiguous. So there's a little bit difference on how they do it, but still, but you can use their calculations then to figure out. Well, if if we count the fifty-one point seven percent, it's worth X. So, you know, it's it's sort of, it it it's a really interesting kind of tool to use.
To individual lots.
Yes, you can do it to individual lots too, so there's.
You get the value.
Yeah, you'd have to go into the programming, because it it actually does the calculation for you. And and you can do it, you can do it actually down to what kind of tree you're anticipating planting where. Yeah. Um, yeah, so it's it's a pretty interesting tool. Uh but but for for instance, it it brought up then, you know, the tree ordinance and after they give the presentation. I I think I sent you, did I, I sent you the, I think you did, yeah, um if anybody's interested in um that presentation. I have the the presentation that goes through what the challenges were in defending um. Uh Canton Township, one of the things, they didn't have anything in their master plan about tree preservation. So that, you know, that was, there were a bunch of things that we do have, but this would be a way that, you know, we could update our ordinance.
Email.
Mm-hmm, I could do that. Yeah, as, but if you go into the um, you know, the tree fund uh that we said, the information that we sent to P P P. I think it's posted now, um you can look at, you know, some of this, that we've used some of it to calculate benefits. So in any event, that the tree fund is, the proposal is eighty percent of the tree fund would be used for reforestation. Um on um SiO Township properties, uh ten percent for maintenance and ten percent for. Um other priorities which might be um. Uh right of way, uh street trees, it might be um uh individual residents. Uh doing um applying for a grant for a tree, uh but everything would be. Um. Uh installed by um a contractor. Um it wouldn't be, you know, here, you know, go get a, you know, nursery kind of thing, yeah. And a.
You said eighty-five percent for.
Eighty percent, eighty percent for reforestation, ten percent for maintenance of, you know, SiO trees and. Midcarson preserves and so forth, and then the ten percent for um.
Is a reforestation on private land or public land, not private land?
Not private, it'd be public. We have, we have plenty of preserves that we can extend the canopy coverage.
And what's the last ten percent for?
Uh ten percent for a a variety of other. Uh ten percent for a, a variety of other priorities and the, the it, the, who would be administering this is it's basically under the director, Parks Director. And a committee that also includes a, uh someone who is um a forestry consultant. So and each year they would come up with a, a project that would use those funds.
And that's out of the village?
Nope, this is from the tree fund where developers.
True.
With the uh.
Yeah, I H A um was one of the projects that went into it, yeah. So, so.
So what is the last ten percent for?
It, it's for, there are a variety of, of uh, there's, if you go into the tree fund, there's a matrix that was put together with maximizing the canopy benefits, okay, tree benefits of trees. So reforestation has way more benefits than doing it anywhere else. And then it's um uh actually uh residential areas that may be less canopy coverage than um, you know, the average in SiO Township.
You mean like when they clear, they clear a bunch of trees, but if the subdivision was not that many trees there, like?
Yeah, just like that.
Yeah, or if you would be older subdivisions, most likely that didn't, because our, our current landscape ordinance puts in plenty of trees. It, it might be older subdivisions.
They didn't want to require.
Yeah. Before they were required. And the other one, or they, well, if they were required, they have to maintain them technically. So it would, might be replacing, you know, it might be on a like um it township hall, you know, it could be at parks, parks, you know, those would be other benefits, but it's more a single tree or a small grouping or something. Or um having um if, y- y- you know, it also could be residents applying for um to have a, a tree. There are also species lists, so the, the goal is native but, you know, native tree planting as opposed to whatever. So and then there are different trees, there are trees for reforestation and there are trees suggested for street trees and so forth.
And PPP is gonna get a first, it's coming to light, it'll be coming to light in the PPP bagging for this one thing.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. So and then that will also give us a basis to update some of our tree lists, look at those, uh because we have some invasives or some trees that are, are no longer uh recommended on, on our list. That hasn't been updated. So anyway, that's it. Um. Do, 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 uh. Road, road advisory. Oh, you're not going. Yeah. Oh, you read, okay, so we, yeah, and we don't have.
You just got on.
It was two years.
Yeah. Um, okay, John, you're also L P C and uh PPP.
Our PPP were meeting this Wednesday. We didn't meet last time. But um Anna, we, we mourn the loss of Anna leaving to go be more ecological in her position. Uh so we wish her well, but we'll miss her.
O H N Stoller.
I would say that. But I will say um with respect to our L P C, we, we, we've, we've been looking at parcels for applicants. We go out and they rank them. Um the L P C got a fifty thousand dollar grant from Ann Arbor uh for the Fletcher Farm. Um you know, the kind of matching funds or you, you know how L P C leverages funds uh from either the state or the feds or the city of Ann Arbor to the extent it's in the green belt. Uh you know, the, we have a bottom parcels that qualify. And uh the Ann Arbor City Council last week ago, tonight approved a fifty thousand dollar appropriation to help assist uh in the acquisition of conservation easement for the Fletcher Farm, which is on Tommy Z Road, north of SiO Church, south of Liberty. So, so there's a large parcel there. I think it's fifteen acres. I don't have. So that's, so that's, that's good. Um. That's the report. And then uh, it's something that might be going to the Board of Trustees for, for them to consider. But the, the, the guy's kind of getting squirrely with it, doesn't know if he wants to do it, doesn't wanna do it. So you know, sometimes these deals don't go through despite our trying to, to get it. So I'll report it out publicly if, if that happens. A lot of the stuff, they can't kind of talk about because we're looking at this parcel, we're talking about this parcel, then you know, a developer says, oh, I shouldn't talk to them about that parcel because I've got my own plans before I'm housing your business.
Is there any discussion at all about, I, I know when you pull together a bunch of funds, there are certain restrictions. But the whole idea of, you, you know, maybe doing some, uh permitting some solar um.
No, I was, I was gonna ask about that at our next meeting. Like what, what, what are the requirements? See, when you partner with all these people, they might have like, they might say no solar, no solar, no energy, no production. Like, I, I was gonna ask at the, our next meeting about other limitations on our grant partners with respect to solar on the, on the, on the location. And what if it's solar, you know, with natural flowers or, you know, natives underneath it. Thanks.
Thanks. Um. Here on River Watershed Council?
The, the Huron River Watershed Council just held a meeting where they honored some individuals that were in the area and also a group. And I thought maybe the public might want to hear about um if anybody was interested in rain gardens, the Huron River Watershed Council, the Watershed Council has partnered with other groups, including um the group that started it in this area, which uh the, the M S U Extension Service, right out of the, the building next door. Um and they give courses or classes in master rain gardening. And you, if anybody was interested in that, is a great way to slow down the flow of water that would then hit the road and run through the, run to the creeks and run down to the river and take sediment and all that with it. So if you have water issues in your yard, you might wanna put in a rain garden just for your own personal sake, but it also helps our rivers and streams. So uh you can go to the Watershed Council website and we'll, and then do a search for rain gardens and you'll come up with the programs. But you can also go to the M S U Extension Service, get it that way too.
Yeah, and even Washau County Conservation District has.
Yep.
Program studios, yeah, they're all.
But I wasn't, yeah, I brought it up.
The Watershed Council, yes. Yeah, and there, there will be an article in the newsletter on um uh uh native landscaping. Um oh, her, her, her culture, her, anyways.
Article. Article?
No, no, no. This is a German composting with hills that Honeybee is doing. And um on E V fire safety. So.
Who's writing?
Um those, they're written, um E S T S, three different people.
Cool though.
Yeah. Um and thank you for your report. Uh anything you wanna highlight or?
No, I'm just saying. The, the notes were so great from the meeting in, we call them notes because we don't have formal minutes. But um um that was like an update from the county. So it's a lot of stuff they're doing and they're gonna do it every year, so.
Okay. Alright. Then uh public comment. I'll open our second session up. At nine eighteen.
I see a hand up.
Alright.
For calling that a hand, as to a mute. Rob Patterson, you are up.
Thank you. Rob Patterson, SiO Township. Um just to add to uh Ryan's report. The thing that made me cough up a lung at the D D A meeting today at noon was when the road commission said it was gonna cost a million dollars to do that section from uh from the Himalayan Restaurant to Weingarts. And then the thing that made me cough up the other lung was when they said that that was only for the westbound lanes. And when you think about Jackson Road, it's about four miles long, so that's twenty-one thousand feet. And with the, with the two boulevards, that's forty-two thousand feet. Um fourteen million dollars worth of reconstruction there. Uh if we apply that three thousand feet that the road commission is talking about now. Um that was a big, big surprise. Um thank you, Commissioner Reiser, for running Zoom. Well done. And uh thanks to all of you for letting Mr. Newman speak. That was very kind and his points on aesthetic, aesthetics, I think were very worthwhile. And then lastly, um I find it odd that the state is so rabid about protecting the stream on Stabler Road. When that stream, as it goes along Stabler Road, is basically the ditch for Stabler Road. And is the result of when they built Stabler, what, eighty, a hundred years ago? And so them asking us to just trust them that that's what the state said, I think you need more proof and documentation that it really is being dictated by the state and it's not just convenient for uh the developer. And thank you all for the vigorous discussion about um Trailwoods and, and moving Stabler. That was very well done. Thank you all. Well done.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I see no hands raised.
Move to adjourn.
When else?
Oh, that's true.
Yep, so um I'll just um as chair, uh close public comment at nine twenty-one. Alright, so we'll move to our minutes. Are there any um additions, corrections?
Sounds like him. I'll move to approve.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Walsh, supported by Commissioner Hind to approve the minutes as posted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say ye aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, minutes are approved as posted. That.
Move for adjourn.
Alright. So I guess support by Commissioner Yapple. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned at nine twenty-two.